...2017 at 6:31. Can we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence? This time, we would like to recognize that Sheila Rosson, longtime employee of School District 14 and who worked many years at Kearney, passed away here a week ago. So take a moment of time for her remembrance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and for all.
Can we have roll call, Monica, please?
Mr. Dr. Leta?
Here.
Mr. Dryly?
Here.
Mr. Keenbanna?
Here.
Need a motion for the approval of the minutes on April 25, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Is there discussion? Hearing non-cred, roll call, Monica, please.
Mr. Dr. Leta?
Aye.
Mr. Dryly?
Aye.
Mr. Rolle?
Aye.
Mr. Tom.
Aye.
There's a need to agend the amendment or the agenda this week. There is a need to amend the agenda for this evening to remove Business 4.11 due to the financial purchase price quote coming in under $15,000. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Is there a discussion? Hearing non-cred, roll call, Monica, please.
Mr. Dr. Leta?
Aye.
Mr. Dryly?
Aye.
Mr. Rolle?
Aye.
Mr. Tom.
Aye.
There's a need to agend the amendment or the agenda this week. There is a need to amend the agenda for this evening to remove Business 4.11 due to the financial purchase price quote coming in under $15,000. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Is there a discussion? Hearing non-cred, roll call, Monica?
Mr. Dr. Leta?
Aye.
Mr. Dryly?
Aye.
Mrs. Keenbanna?
Aye.
Mr. Rolle?
Aye.
Mr. Tom.
Aye.
Need a motion for the approval of the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Is there a discussion? Hearing non-cred, roll call, Monica?
Mr. Dr. Leta?
Aye.
Mr. Dryly?
Aye.
Mrs. Keenbanna?
Aye.
Mr. Rolle?
Aye.
Mr. Tom.
Aye.
Okay, moving on to audience comments. Dr. J. I mean, I'm sorry, recognitions and celebrations.
Yes, under recognition and celebrations, we have a few today. So our first one, we would like to recognize from Rose Hill, the DaVinci Project. Do we have representatives here from Rose Hill?
Yeah.
All right.
I apologize, the parking lot was jam-packed. If you are from Rose Hill and you had a DaVinci Day project, will you please come forward? So DaVinci Day has kind of become a tradition at Rose Hill. This is our fourth annual DaVinci Day. And DaVinci Day is modeled after Leonardo da Vinci, who was an amazing genius in his own right. Not only was he an artist, he was a cartographer, he was, he studied medicine, botany, he studied just about everything you could, and he was a genius. And so every year in the springtime, we celebrate Leonardo da Vinci, and we turn the tables over to our students, and we let them create and be geniuses in their own right. You saw some of their projects coming in. And after we have our school-wide science or STEAM Fair, which includes art as well, we open it up from kindergarten to fifth grade, we kind of choose our Nobel Prize winners. And in science, Nobel Prize winners are recognized by their peers to be exemplars or something that we strive for in our own work. The students up here are some of those. Some of them are first graders, second graders, all the way up through fifth grade. And every year, we just applaud and celebrate them. So we have two teachers that kind of took the lead on that this year. Dan Sullivan.[313.19][313.19](applause). Kevin Mackin.[315.19][315.19](applause). And we have Gabriel Ortiz.[317.58][317.58](applause). Ulysses Hernandez Franco.[321.13][321.13](applause). Paula Hernandez Franco.[323.13][323.13](applause). Brianna Converse.[325.13][325.13](applause). Mia Montez.[327.13][327.13](applause). I don't see Owen Wheeler and Maggie Wheeler. Brian Esparza.[333.13][333.13](applause). Jayden Mays.[335.13][335.13](applause). Allison Esparza.[337.13][337.13](applause). Another, the Barajas family, they did a family project. Tyler Walenta.[342.13][342.13](applause). Esmeralda Rivas Hernandez.[344.13][344.13](applause). Jaime Vega Lopez.[346.13][346.13](applause). Reggie Sanchez.[348.13][348.13](applause). Andrew Holman.[350.13][350.13](applause). Cassius Earnhardt.[352.13][352.13](applause). Evan Schimpf.[354.13][354.13](applause). Olivia Schimpf.[356.13][356.13](applause). Carla Ortiz.[358.13][358.13](applause). And I think those are all the participants we have in attendance. So our DaVinci Day Nobel Prize winners.
Stay up here. We'll stay up here. And also, if some of the parents want to take a picture with their son or daughter, please come on up. Come on, parents, come on.
Squeeze in tight.
I'm gonna go ahead and let parents get their pictures first, so if you're gonna take a picture, go ahead and do it, and then I'll take the district's picture.
He's like, "No, I don't want to."
The pictures that I take will be available for anybody to view and download, and you can find them at the Adams 14 website. Click on About Us and Board of Education and look at the bottom of the page. You can download these pictures that I take. All right, I'm gonna go ahead and take mine. Everybody look right here, please. A little closer. Great, two pictures. Here's the first one. Ready, set. Looks good. One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Good job.
Good job.
Is there a student from the DaVinci group that want to talk to the boards, have anything to say?
Are they all shy?
Yes.
So, this is Andrew Holman, he's a fifth grader.
Hi, so my project was on a portable flashlight that you could, like, mostly take on the go. And I did this project mostly because I wanted to show my friends and other people what you could easily make and use for something portable. And I built this flashlight that you use two D batteries, and then you wrap them in a paper towel, and then you, or a paper towel roll, and then you pretty much connect wires to the batteries and to a light bulb. And then you just attach the light bulb in a cardboard piece of paper to the other side of the battery. And then you use a paperclip with two brads into the side of the paper towel roll, and then you stick the paperclip on one end of the brad to the other, and then it's a running circuit through the flashlight.
Wow.
Okay.
Thank you so much to Rose Hill. Our next presentation will be the ALSUP music teacher. Mr. Mike Abde will give us information on that, about the music program.
Good evening, Superintendent Brego, President Rowland, Board. Unfortunately, Mr. Ricks was supposed to, going to be here tonight with his group, recorder group, but he was in the emergency room last night and was unable to bring his group. But I wanted to take this opportunity just to share with you guys what he's been doing, because Mr. Ricks has given a lot to the district. I just wanted to take a moment to share the work he's been doing. Mr. Ricks started teaching recorder to his fifth grade students at ALSUP in 1996. He did this at a time when some of the art funds were limited, and he wanted to make sure that students still had access to music during the school day so that they could make a connection to the school. He decided then and there that that's something he would carry on, because after research, he found that playing the recorder helped to stimulate brain cells in kids before puberty, and he felt like it got them motivated to learn for the day. Since that time and this year, Mr. Ricks's class has been able to perform at the Popular Grove and Rose Terrace Nursing Home in Commerce City, the Argyle Assisted Living Center in Denver. He's also performed at recorder festivals in Jefferson and Adams County, at the American Recorder Society Annual Festival, at the Denver Civic Center for the Adams 14er Festival, as well as all of our multicultural programs at ALSUP. So unfortunately, they can't be here to be recognized as a group, they were gonna play a song for you. But Mr. Ricks, I just want to point out to you guys that this, this is a man who's given 48 years of his life to education, and 38 years of those have been at ALSUP. So this is a man that I just wanted to recognize.[656.13][656.13](applause). So hopefully, we can get him and his group out here to play a song for you in the future when, when he's feeling a little bit better. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Our next recognition is the Adams City High School Tax Help Program by Ms. Karen Chef.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. Originally, I think Ms. Carol Duran was supposed to be here to do this honor, but I think we were originally scheduled for May 23, and they moved us up to May 9, so maybe not all of the parts got put together correctly. So we are here. Unfortunately, we didn't have school today, as you know, so I wasn't able to remind the kids, but three of the students did, were able to show up. Some of them are over at lifeguard training, they're at work, they didn't have a ride, but be assured, they were very dedicated students during this, during the tax season. I had 23 students this year complete the IRS certification exam. They did, they broke the record, the all-time record, this was the fifth year at Adams City High School to do the pilot, they were the pilot in the state of Colorado, and so we've been doing it longer than any other high school in the state. And we did 423 returns this year for over 1.1 million in refunds. So that was a record, yeah.[732.51][732.51](applause). So I'd like to, I'd like to recognize the three students who were able to make it tonight. So come on up. Angel. The other 20, we'll have to talk to them, I mean, I'll have to honor them in class, unfortunately. But they were also supposed to be honored at the Adams County Government Program today, our government offices, but we had to cancel the field trip because the buses weren't running, et cetera. But we have Darian Howell, Angel Gomez, and Jesus Martinez.[768.13][768.13](applause). The tax site ran seven weeks, and the kids had to volunteer at least 30 hours in order to get the credit from Ames Community College. If they volunteered 40 hours, they get a letter from Governor Hickenlooper. So all three of them achieved the 40 hours, so they will get the governor's letter for their resume, et cetera, et cetera. And these are all three seniors, so I wonder, I recognize them for that too, because they're wonderful kids, and I'm gonna miss them a lot, so congratulations, great job.[813.63][813.63](applause). Oh, and one more thing, my husband was there every weekend with me, he's an auditor, and he comes and audits the returns with us. He's there every single second I'm there. We're the first ones, well, not the first ones there, sometimes the kids be just there in the morning, it's eight, but we're the last ones to leave every Saturday, and I couldn't do it without him, so this is my husband, Dave Chef.[836.43][836.43](applause). That's it? Yeah, so we'll take a picture. Unless you guys want to say something?
Down here or up here? Down there.
Say anything?
We have a few more, Mr. Rolle. We have Adams City High School Daniel's Fund finalist, and I'm gonna ask, is there someone from the high school? I can read this, but it happened at the high school, so if there's a high school representative? No?
(laughter and applause).
The whole thing?
Just if you would read that.
The Daniel Scholarship Program is pleased to announce the finalists for the 2017 Class of Daniel Scholars. The last step for all finalists is their personal interview, conducted in the students' home state by local community leaders. Five out of each ACH students were awarded a scholarship. The 2017 Class of Daniel Scholars are, let's see, Daniel Para Areola, Kayla Noemi Prieto, Angel Ignacio Salazar. Those three were the finalists, and the next five I'm going to read are the winners.
And if they're here, they're welcome to come up.
Oh, sure.
We'll know who they are.
No, not here, apparently.
Not here.
All right.[905.13][905.13](laughter). And then the five winners, the first three were the finalists, the five winners are Fernando Vialobos, Angel, (applause). Angel Priscilla Gomez Trujillo.[917.13][917.13](applause). Andrea Hernandez.[919.13][919.13](applause). Antonia Marquez.[921.13][921.13](applause). And Carol Marina Martinez Loja.
And am I correct, just so that everyone in the audience knows, these are full scholarships to the university of your choice, so...
(applause).
And I would just like to say to our community, I believe in all the schools in Colorado, Adams City High School had the most in the entire state, so once again, congratulations to the high school.[966.13][966.13](applause).
Before we go down, take a picture, because I know you'll all want to leave. Can you go up there and tell us what college you have chosen to go to, or what university? Okay, go ahead.
The mic up there.
Go up on the mic.
So my name is Angel, and I decided to go to Regis University.[994.13][994.13](applause).
My name is Carol Martinez, and I'll be attending American University.
My name is Fernanda, and I will be attending the University of Colorado Boulder.[1012.13][1012.13](applause).
If the parents are here, please come on up so you can take a picture with your young daughter.
We do have one more, Mr. Rolle. We have the STOMP Parent Volunteer Program that will be presented by Mr. Jesse Martinez.
Hello, distinguished members of the board and Dr. Brego. We thank you for giving us this time to recognize some awesome parents here in Adams 14. The Office of Family and Community Engagement and the principal at DuPont Elementary Almeida would like to recognize Adams 14 parents who participated in the first-ever STOMP Parent-to-Parent Professional Program. STOMP stands for Support Team of Motivated Parents. The DuPont is the dinosaurs, so we thought that the STOMP acronym was sufficient for those dinosaurs there. The pilot program began in January with the goal of to train parent volunteers to provide small group reading support. As part of the program, parents volunteered Monday through Thursday and took classes on Friday to prepare for the paraprofessional work keys exam. Being a part of STOMP, each parent has completed over 200 service hours since January.
The 17 committed STOMP parent volunteers, 10 Spanish-speaking parents, 7 bilingual or English-only speakers, have supported 80 students in grades K through 3 who just needed a little extra help in reading to be at grade level. Just in a short bit of time, these parents have exited over 16 students back into the classroom, and with the data that we have collected, we are seeing student growth in the areas of phoneme segmentation fluency, nonsense word fluency, and reading connected text, which all build fundamental reading skills to help students read. We believe, with a full year of support, that our students would be able to demonstrate significant and sustained growth through the results of this program.
One last thing, since the time the parents started, they have grown in their confidence, and it's been a complete 360. From the time they started, they were nervous about entering those classrooms, but to see them actually in the videos and the confidence that they exude when they're actually working with the students, it's, it's really eye-opening and just amazing. I just want to acknowledge these parents who have volunteered their time to help our students be better readers. This program is such a win-win for our kids and families, as STOMP parents have received ongoing paraprofessional training, and once they pass their work keys exam, are eligible to begin applying for paraprofessional positions in any school district. One thing I wanted to add also is, we have actually a few parents that actually have taken their work keys and they've passed, and so I just want to acknowledge that.[1228.26][1228.26](applause). So please join me in recognizing the parent volunteers and staff who committed their time, knowledge, and energy to support our Adams 14 students, and here we go. So I'd like to recognize Janelle Fuller, she is the STOMP Coordinator, Reading Interventionist at DuPont Elementary, and also has worked here at the district with me.[1253.21][1253.21](applause). We have Courtney Ringel, a bilinguacy coach at DuPont Elementary.[1262.13][1262.13](applause). Isabel Garcia, the family liaison.[1269.13][1269.13](applause). We have Crystal Lopez, who's a parent.[1276.13][1276.13](applause). Alicia Rodriguez, parent.[1282.13][1282.13](applause). Alba Ortiz, parent.[1288.13][1288.13](applause). Sonia Corral, parent.[1294.13][1294.13](applause). Marisol Mendoza, parent.[1300.13][1300.13](applause). Laura Alvarez, parent.[1306.13][1306.13](applause). Jessica Moreno, parent. Rayanne Javier.[1317.13][1317.13](applause). Jessica Rocha.[1323.13][1323.13](applause). Miriam Galván.[1328.13][1328.13](applause). Rosio Rocha.[1334.13][1334.13](applause). And Susana Torres.[1339.13][1339.13](applause). And distinguished board members, I do have like a data report that I would like to share with you, just on like, just with this short bit of time, with these parents working with our students in grades K through 3, the growth that they've had. So I'll be sure to share that with you as well. Oh, uh, oh, yes, yes, Maria Aguilar, sorry. Oh, yeah.[1363.13][1363.13](applause). The, let's see here, oh yeah, sorry, I apologize. The Guerrero?
Laida.
Maria Rodriguez.[1379.13][1379.13](applause). Verana Covarubias.[1381.13][1381.13](applause). Anna Covarubias.[1383.13][1383.13](applause). So these are our 17 parents that volunteered over 200 service hours just from January until this last week. So, thank you so much.[1402.13][1402.13](applause).
We could just stand up, and if there are any family members that wanted to come up and take a picture, you're welcome to.
There's the first one. Ready, set. Thank you.
Thank you.[1493.13][1493.13](applause).
Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, and one more thing, my husband was there every weekend with me, he's an auditor, and he comes and audits the returns with us. He's there every single second I'm there. We're the first ones, well, not the first ones there, because sometimes the kids be just there in the morning, it's eight, but we're the last ones to leave every Saturday, and I couldn't do it without him, so this is my husband, Dave Chef.[1536.13][1536.13](applause).
That's it? Yeah, so we'll take a picture. Unless you guys want to say something?
Down here or up here? Down there.
Say anything? Say something? All right, if everybody can look right here for a picture, please. Ready? One, two, three. Thank you.
All right, if everybody can look right here for a picture, please.
Ready? One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a few more, Mr. Rolle. We have the STOMP Parent Volunteer Program that will be presented by Mr. Jesse Martinez.
Hello, distinguished members of the board and Dr. Brego. We thank you for giving us this time to recognize some awesome parents here in Adams 14. The Office of Family and Community Engagement and the principal at DuPont Elementary Almeida would like to recognize Adams 14 parents who participated in the first-ever STOMP Parent-to-Parent Professional Program. STOMP stands for Support Team of Motivated Parents. The DuPont is the dinosaurs, so we thought that the STOMP acronym was sufficient for those dinosaurs there. The pilot program began in January with the goal of to train parent volunteers to provide small group reading support. As part of the program, parents volunteered Monday through Thursday and took classes on Friday to prepare for the paraprofessional work keys exam. Being a part of STOMP, each parent has completed over 200 service hours since January.
The 17 committed STOMP parent volunteers, 10 Spanish-speaking parents, 7 bilingual or English-only speakers, have supported 80 students in grades K through 3 who just needed a little extra help in reading to be at grade level. Just in a short bit of time, these parents have exited over 16 students back into the classroom, and with the data that we have collected, we are seeing student growth in the areas of phoneme segmentation fluency, nonsense word fluency, and reading connected text, which all build fundamental reading skills to help students read. We believe, with a full year of support, that our students would be able to demonstrate significant and sustained growth through the results of this program.
One last thing, since the time the parents started, they have grown in their confidence, and it's been a complete 360. From the time they started, they were nervous about entering those classrooms, but to see them actually in the videos and the confidence that they exude when they're actually working with the students, it's, it's really eye-opening and just amazing. I just want to acknowledge these parents who have volunteered their time to help our students be better readers. This program is such a win-win for our kids and families, as STOMP parents have received ongoing paraprofessional training, and once they pass their work keys exam, are eligible to begin applying for paraprofessional positions in any school district. One thing I wanted to add also is, we have actually a few parents that actually have taken their work keys and they've passed, and so I just want to acknowledge that.[1708.13][1708.13](applause). So please join me in recognizing the parent volunteers and staff who committed their time, knowledge, and energy to support our Adams 14 students, and here we go. So I'd like to recognize Janelle Fuller, she is the STOMP Coordinator, Reading Interventionist at DuPont Elementary, and also has worked here at the district with me.[1733.13][1733.13](applause). We have Courtney Ringel, a bilinguacy coach at DuPont Elementary.[1741.13][1741.13](applause). Isabel Garcia, the family liaison.[1749.13][1749.13](applause). We have Crystal Lopez, who's a parent.[1757.13][1757.13](applause). Alicia Rodriguez, parent.[1764.13][1764.13](applause). Alba Ortiz, parent.[1771.13][1771.13](applause). Sonia Corral, parent.[1778.13][1778.13](applause). Marisol Mendoza, parent.[1785.13][1785.13](applause). Laura Alvarez, parent.[1791.13][1791.13](applause). Jessica Moreno, parent. Rayanne Javier.[1802.13][1802.13](applause).
Thank you. From the board, we'd like to say thank you for helping our students.
And Mr. Rola, that's the end of our recognitions.
Okay, we will be moving on to audience comments, but at this time, I wish we could give you the day off tomorrow, but we can't do it unless somebody comes up with a million dollars. So if you want to leave at this time, you can go ahead and leave before we start audience comments.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for coming.
Bye.
Bye, thank you. Check. If anybody from the overflow room wants to come back in, there's plenty of chairs Before we start with audience comments, I want to share some brief highlights from Board Policy BEDH regarding public participation at board meetings. All citizens who will be speaking this evening have already viewed the full version of Policy BEDH. Anyone in the audience who would like a copy of the full policy can request one from Monica. Please remember, state your name. You have three minutes to speak, no citing of time between speakers will be permitted. All comments need to be district-related. Your comments can suggest improvements, but should be productive. You can provide written statements to the board for review. The president can recognize a board member or the superintendent to respond to questions to clarify a district position. First individual, Barb McDowell.
Barb McDowell, you don't need my address now, right? Okay. Good evening, President Rola, Dr. Obrego, distinguished members of the board. I'm speaking tonight as an individual. To begin, I want to tell you a little bit about my grandparents. My grandfather, Cristian Cipriano Alberto Lara, was born in Moro Nuevo Mexico. When he was eight years old, his parents moved to Pueblo, Colorado, and that was when he began to quit speaking Spanish and his name was shortened to Ciprian Albert. My grandmother, who was of German, Apache, and Mexican descent, was born Beatriz Evelyn in Antonito, Colorado, in the San Luis Valley. Her family also moved to Pueblo when she was a young girl, and she began to be referred to as Bea or Beatrice. My grandmother never really spoke about growing up in Pueblo, but I remember hearing stories from my grandfather about the hatred and racism of Mexicans led by the Ku Klux Klan. The result, my grandparents in effect abandoned their culture in order to survive. Shortly after the KKK left Southern Colorado, the state elected a governor who wanted to build a wall between Colorado and New Mexico to keep the aliens out. At the age of 66, my grandmother returned to school to get her degree. During this period, she began to cease running from who she was and regained a pride in her culture and heritage. It was because of these two people I love that I made the decision when graduating with my degree to teach in only one of two districts, Mapleton or Adams 14. I wanted to work with students who speak another, a language other than English, so I could advocate for them and teach them to sell how to self-advocate. Nearly 100 years after the KKK reign of terror in Colorado, and approximately 80 years after Governor Edwin C. Johnson sent troops to stop aliens and indigents from entering Colorado from New Mexico, we learned some things haven't changed much. So now to my point. As ELD teachers, we've been given so many reasons for moving ELD into the elective schedule. One example is, parents want their children to learn English. This is possibly true, but I think what they really want is for their children to receive a good education, and they can get this when they have exposure to a variety of experiences that can be found within the elective schedule. The latest research on ELD students completed in October of 2016 found the negative experiences ELD students faced. They felt segregated, had long-term self-esteem damage, had limited access to educational opportunities by scheduling ELD during the electives block, and received inequities in testing practices. Because yes, our ELD students are tested more. Some students are currently allowing their names to be anglicized, like my grandparents. Some Mexican students do not want to be with the Mexicans. Some students are choosing to no longer speak Spanish, even though it means they are still language learners. Other students make fun of some students with comments like, "At least I'm not in ELD." Some students are feeling shame for who they are, just like my grandparents. As educators, we need to stop children from feeling inferior for their ability to speak a language other than English. We need to stop letting history repeat itself. We need to give students the quality education they deserve that gives them access to all subjects that will allow them to be successful. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Robert Chipman, HVAC tech in the district and vice president of the CCSEA.
Jason Malmberg, vice president of the Teachers Union and middle school music teacher at Kearney.
Barb McDowell, Classroom Teachers Association President and ELD teacher at Kearney Middle School.
Gina Otterby, UNISERV Director for Central Adams UNISERV, Commerce City, one of the school districts that I work for.
Wayne Scott, Executive Director for the Classified School Employees, AFT Local 6186.
Good evening, we are speaking tonight jointly representing our members as the classified and certified unions in support of retention of staff at ESS. Because we as leaders are committed to this district and among the five of us here have nearly 75 years, to demonstrate that strong commitment is the reason we are here. Our district is and has been in turnaround for years now, and that clock is quickly approaching zero. Other than the support staff, the majority of administrative staff in this building does not average more than two years in service. The average classified employee has 14 years, and the average certified employee has 17 years. Additionally, we have heard changes need to be made because of the turnaround status of our district. We strongly disagree. That is all, we have seen in this district, change upon change upon change. What we need is consistency and shared decision-making among all of the stakeholders, which includes the two employee unions and the community. We've recently learned Linda Shamblin, interim Chief Human Resource Officer, as well as Teresa Hernandez, Director of Assessment and Technology, have turned in their resignation. Regarding Linda Shamblin, in her short time here in Adams 14, she has been fair and expedient when handling possible discipline or investigative issues among staff. In many cases, she has dealt with investigations in short time period, which in turn has saved the district money. How may you ask? When a certified staff member is played on, placed on paid administrative leave, a substitute is needed to cover that class. The district is then paying two employees. When a classified employee is placed on paid administrative leave, other staff members need to cover that position, which negatively impacts their own job. Additionally, Ms. Shamblin's title of interim Chief Human Resource Officer has been a year and a half. We do not think anyone who has a temporary title is, would feel respected after, for that time. In regards to Teresa Hernandez, even with her limited time in the district as one of the few people who know the educational history of this district and has been instrumental in ensuring technology is beginning to be up to date. We want to make clear that our speaking here to you tonight is in no way means that we are always in agreement with the decisions made at the district level. Nonetheless, our district will not be able to improve its academic status if we are not working together towards that goal. Additionally, we are hearing cuts are imminent and necessary. If this district is working at the skeletal level, we can kiss our district goodbye and just beg the state to take us over. It is our greatest hope that this is not any of your goals. Staff turnover is at an all-time high with more staff looking elsewhere. The 2017-18 school year will see principals with less than one year at Adam City High School, Central Elementary, Hanson Elementary, and Rose Hill Elementary. Any efforts to deal with turnaround has been and is going to continue to be greatly undermined by the turnover of staff. We continue to hear from our members that they do not feel supported by the district admin or nor the Board of Ed, because no one knows who is driving our bus. However, on April 25th, hundreds of Adam City High School students walked out of school in protest of what is happening in this district and the negative impact it is having on their education. Over a dozen students and a few parents attended the Board of Ed meeting that night in addition for the same reason. This Thursday, our district will present to the State Board. Other districts have been taken to task for not turning around their district, and they have a stable staff. What do you think they're going to do with Adams 14 with the only thing we are consistent in is our revolving doors? We encourage you as the Board of Ed to put a stop to the revolving doors. You are the stewards of Adams 14, thus responsible for ensuring we have the school all students deserve. We would appreciate a response to our concerns.
I'm Michelle Boliger. I have been a science teacher for eight years, with the past four being in Adams 14. I started in this district at Lester Arnold under the leadership of Gianni Thompson and Lisa Schwartz. Together as a team, we wrote our mission and vision, and within two years, we pulled the school from turnaround into improvement. I will always be a part of our Phoenix family, but in 2015, I along with others made the decision to follow my fearless leaders who had been taken out of the building mid-year to try to help Adam City High School get out of turnaround. I once again found myself part of an amazing team of individuals who are not only incredibly talented, inspiring teachers, but truly knew what our kids needed and what they are capable of. Gianni and Lisa enacted some of the same changes from Lester, and they showed similar success. I was so proud to be a part of this community and could not wait to see what the future held. I had students discovering a love for science and parents thanking me for helping their child succeed in a difficult subject for the first time. I recruited talented teachers to the district because we had something special going on and the very best kids out there. It still amazes me how strong our students have been through all of the changes in teachers and principals they've been through. And now for this year, which started off rough and became impossible. When Lisa left to follow her dream of becoming head principal, we were left with a huge gap in our leadership team. Instead of hiring a replacement, we were told the position was gone and to make do with less. The remaining admin in the building did their best, but there was no way they could do both their jobs and Lisa's. Then Gianni was moved to ESS to head secondary schools, a position he is apparently no longer in. After multiple postings and interviews, our building interview team and superintendent chose a new principal for us, Lisa Schwartz. It was a sigh of relief to so many of us that we would have our leader back. We had seen what CDE said in their report, that the systems she put into place were what we needed to continue to move out of turnaround. The board did not approve Lisa's hire, did not communicate that at the board meeting, and instead met in private when supposedly one member convinced them all to change their vote. We were given no reason why, so we held a town hall meeting to give the board a chance to explain. We were required to submit our questions ahead of time, but then were given politician-style answers that did not tell us the true reason why. Our inquisitive students saw right through this, and when they demanded answers, they were rudely shut down. That is why they marched, and I am so incredibly proud of them for organizing and standing up to have their voices heard. Over the weekend, word got out that four assistant principal candidates were selected to move forward by the school interview team, and that none of them were chosen by the superintendent to be recommended to the board. Instead, they were hand-selected from across the district, some who did not even apply. It seems as if ESS is working against us, not for us, and definitely not with us. Legality aside, is it just wrong to do this to a school that is trying so hard to cling to any consistency or voice we still have? Every day, it's more bad news, more people or programs being taken away from us, more decisions from ESS that seem to go against what's best for our kids. It's so incredibly hard to teach when I have a million thoughts of instability about my job. I've observed some of the best teachers I know break down in the workroom and struggle to perform daily tasks because it feels as though we are under attack. We've seen people that we respect and trust be tossed around by the district, and it makes us wonder, when will it be us? When will we be disrespected and tossed aside without any reason given because it's clear that we are not valued here? We love our kids, our coworkers, and teaching, but we can only take so much. That is why I made the difficult decision to leave Adams 14. It absolutely breaks my heart because this has become my community and my home. I cried in my interview for my new job when they asked about leaving my kids because it's not what I want to do, it's what I have to do for my own health and job security. I would love to return to this district in the future and work with this amazing community again, which is why I urge the board and superintendent to listen and take into account what your teachers, your parents, and your students are saying, because our kids deserve the best, and that's not what they've been getting.
Good evening, Dr. Obrego and board members. I'm speaking tonight because I think we're all in need of a reminder that each and every one of us is a servant of students. From our positions in this district, we are not servants of our own power, or our personal financial profit, or our family, or friends unless they happen to be students. In short, we are not servants of ourselves. So then what does it look like to serve students? I think mostly it looks collaborative. There is information that you have that I don't, and information that students and teachers and parents have that you don't. But true collaboration can't happen without trust, and trust cannot happen without transparency. So the closed-door dealings and employment that exclude the voices of teachers, and parents, and students, and all of their concerns, that just creates suspicion and uncertainty and instability, not collaboration that benefits our students. True collaboration cannot happen without respect, and there's no respect in pretending to care what teachers and parents think, pulling them from their homes and classrooms to be on hiring teams in good faith, believing that what they think actually matters, only to find that it's all just pretend, that the decks have been stacked differently. It isn't respectful or wise that you totally disregarded State Board recommendations for administrative consistency, as well as pleas from students, teachers, and parents for the same. We've asked that you prioritize consistency over and over and over again, and yet we are ignored. I want you to hear about just a couple of teachers' successes. In the last round of STAR testing, teachers Jo Maloney and Brianna Young have classes with growth as high as 70 and 83 percent. What do they have in common? They were both trained by masters of literacy instruction, Chris Tavani and Sam Bennett. They've been in the building for four years. Doesn't seem like long, but for our district it is. They've had time to tweak and learn and grow. Fancy equipment like Chromebooks and programs like BT are nice, tools are good, but it's not what we need most. We need instructional masters and consistency, and we need to keep the teachers who care deeply about our students to date. We know that about 25% of our staff is either leaving or looking to leave. That number is sure to grow if your votes tonight disrespect the voices of students, parents, and teachers. It's not too late for you to think about the students we serve. It's not too late for you to do the right thing. Thank you. Thank you.
Board of Education Superintendent Abrego. I'm Amanda Gonzalez. I live at 5821 East 68th Avenue here in Commerce City. Not only have I been a teacher at Adams City High School for the past four years, but I am a community member and I'm a parent of four children in this district. I have one child who attends Adams City High School, and my two sons are slated to attend Adams City High School in the fall. I've seen a lot of change in the past four years and have weathered the ups and downs of this district because I have had hope that you, the Board of Education, has had the best interests of the community in mind. As a teacher leader in the building and as someone who presented to the State Review Panel last April, I've participated in efforts to ensure that our children are being educated in a manner worthy of this community and in a way that would adequately prepare them for having options after high school. The State Review Panel observed that constant change in leadership is detrimental to our kids. Yet, since Dr. Abrego has been our superintendent, you all have consistently undermined recommendations by the state for consistent leadership at Adams City High School. Dr. Abrego has blatantly accused staff at Adams City of not caring for kids or doing our jobs and has not made any attempt at staff retention. I find it highly offensive that Dr. Abrego has most recently stated to members of the staff that collaboration is not leadership, and indeed that staff need to be told what to do. Last year, an interview panel made recommendations for a principal. Dr. Abrego stated that none of those candidates were qualified, leaving us without a permanent leader. Yet months later, he allowed one of those unqualified candidates to again make it to the final round. The board chose not to vote on the chosen candidate who had made significant changes in the school as an assistant principal, again leaving our children without a permanent principal. This time around, Dr. Abrego refused the recommendations for school leadership from a panel of interviewers and instead seems to be pursuing only people who have connections with the board to lead Adams City High School. Until these past few months, I have never considered taking my extremely high-achieving children completely out of this district. However, the thought now runs through my head every single day. The professionals at Adams City High School, including myself, have been yelled at, disparaged, disrespected by Dr. Abrego, which is highly unprofessional and exactly the opposite of what we strive to teach our children every single day. I no longer believe that you, our Board of Education, have the best interests of students in mind, nor do I believe that you represent the community in the decisions that are collectively made. I ask that you direct Doctors Abrego and Patterson towards lawful hiring practices. I ask that you demand the respectful treatment of the professionals that work in this school district, and I ask that you take a good look within yourself. Find an ethical reason for why you are on this Board of Education. I ask you to please do right by our community.
Before you start that clock, can we recognize the high school students again, the Daniel's Fund kids, the tax kids? All right, you can start the clock. First off, my name's Jo Maloney. I've been a ninth grade, 12th grade English teacher, film studies teacher, basketball and tennis coach at Adams City for the last four years. For the past four years, the biggest area of concern, and everyone has already touched on it, is consistency or inconsistency in this district and at our school. We've had four principals since I've been there, and we're currently working on a third athletic director. A number of APs and teachers, countless teachers, have left this building since I've started here four years ago. Any successful school, business, sports program, government, or even just a relationship depends on consistency. It's a trickle-down effect, guys. When the leaders change, it creates instability and dissent, period. I've watched principals come into this building and fire amazing teachers whose names they barely knew. A year later, those leaders were gone, out of the door. What positive change is actually being created from this? Our students are incredibly gifted and smart, I think that's pretty evident after what we've seen today. They're not blind to this cycle. They know what they deserve and they know what's owed to them. Year in and year out, the leaders of this district and school cheat them from one of the most basic human rights, which is a proper education. The purpose of education is to teach one to think intensely, critically, and creatively. But because of our inconsistency, we've quickly been robbing our students from this. Yes, there are many things that need to be changed and fixed in this district. The lack of consistency and transparency that has existed in this four short years that I have been here is mind-blowing. For me, that is first and foremost. The lies and general lack of concern for our kids scares me to death. Trust from day one is built with consistency. The disconnect between the district and our student body has never been bigger since I've been here, and I don't believe their best interests are at heart. The past year, this past year, students and teachers of alike have made attempts to make their voices heard so we can bridge this gap that separates the teachers and the students at Adams City High School and those who call the shots. We have voiced our concerns and they have not been respected. The only thing that has been consistent is inconsistency. What this school lacks most is somebody to lead us. We have so many students who love this community and love this school, and it is not the kids that have gotten us into this mess, it is the adults who have mismanaged and lost sight of what matters most, which is these kids. This is all why we're here in the first place. I'm going to leave you with three things. First, lack of consistency brings lack of interest. How can we get any student to buy into their education when their favorite teacher, or principal, or athletic director, or coach is fired? The principals barely get to know their, before the principals barely get to know their names and they're gone. Secondly, consistent action will create consistent results. We need to stick to one thing before looking for a new silver bullet. Change is not easy and does not come quickly. We need leaders to be understanding of this and committed to this. And the last thing I want to leave you with, if the board, superintendent, and leaders of this district want to be taken seriously, you need to be consistent. Teachers' input has to be asked and it has to be respected. Our voice and students' voice must be heard if anyone is going to take this district seriously.
Karen Chef, taking off my teacher hat, I'm putting on my citizen hat and former resident of Commerce City, and I just wanted to share a story with you. I grew up in Pueblo. I'm the youngest of five children. Pueblo reminds me a lot of Commerce City, and I moved to Denver 10 years ago, not, excuse me, five years ago when I got married. But growing up in Pueblo as the youngest of five children, about this time of my freshman year of high school, May of 1985, my parents came home real late one night, as usual, they worked almost 24/7 it seemed like, and they said, "We sold the house. We rented a one-bedroom apartment. We don't have room for you. Go live with your sister." And my sister was just barely 21, she was really not capable of raising anybody. She worked 3 to 11 at 7-Eleven. I went to school 7 to 3. So basically, from that day forward, I did pretty much raise myself, and the only place I had that was safe and consistent was school. I loved school. I graduated a Gold Court senior, I'm very proud that I went to Pueblo Central High School. I went to college on about a full ride scholarship that I earned on my academics, and the only way I did it was with the consistency and the place I had called home was with school, which was safe. And I had the same teachers every year, the same principal, the same, there's still teachers from my elementary school that are still there today. It's crazy. The consistency was wonderful, and I think it really, really helped my successes in life. So, fast forward 31 years to last year at graduation. Broke my heart to sit in the audience and listen to the class president tell us the story of the last four years, and I think some of you were there at graduation, and it was heartbreaking to hear that girl say about how much turnover they had had, who she, how she didn't know who to go to. They never had the same counselor, they didn't even know who the assistant principals were from day to day. Their teachers changed all the time. She was, and I just thought, my goodness, certainly we're going to learn from this. Certainly, we're listening. Certainly, we all hear that consistency is what the kids need and that that's what is, does make for success, and I really feel that's what helped me. So I just wanted to share that with you. Thank you.
My name is Mira Escalante, and I have been a teacher in Adams 14 for more than 14 years. I have been teaching at Adams High School for more than four years, so this is what I have to say. I always prioritize listening to our students even during our class because I believe it's important to create a safe space for them where they know that their opinions matter. It's disappointing to hear that they feel that the administration leaders who run the district and the school don't care about what they have to say. It was demonstrated by the meeting we had with them at the high school. You always judge the students based on the standardized test results, but never take into consideration the barriers they have overcome. A student who doesn't feel comfortable or accepted in the school setting and who is not encouraged to develop his or her emotional intelligence can't learn the content. You have never facilitated that comfortable environment to our students' need in order to succeed academically because you are always changing our leaders and teachers. That being said, we need you to step up and make all what needs to happen. We need board members that understand the needs of our children and community, and we demand to have a better leadership. Thank you.
Abrego, Mr. Rola, distinguished members of the board. My name is Robert Snyder, and I am a math teacher at Adams City High School. Google told me that today is National Teachers' Day, and I am here to lament the current status, the situation our teaching staff is put in at Adams City High School. As the school year is winding down, I've been forced to come to terms with the fact that due to the current state of our school and our district, the lack of support for teachers, the lack of transparent communication, the lack of trust, and the lack of leadership, many of my colleagues, teachers who have inspired me to be a better educator, to dedicate myself heart and soul to our students, many of those same teachers have been forced to find other places to work next year. To be clear, it was not an issue of being non-renewed, they chose to leave. They had a tough decision to make, and I could not in good faith tell them to stay, that everything would be fine. I cannot hold it against them for looking elsewhere for a more secure future for themselves and for their family. These are the same people, people my age, who are yearning for a place where they can put down roots, where they can call home, where they can start both a family at home and a family at school. These are the people who always chose to go the extra mile, and in this case, that mile was too far. I myself was forced to make a hard decision for my future. My wife and I recently welcomed our first child, Owen, in March, and at the same time, we were looking for a permanent home, a place where we could buy a house, put down roots, and have our children go through the school system with pride. For what it's worth, knowing what I know, what's going in the school district, we eliminated Commerce City from our search immediately. I myself am still planning on persisting, sticking it out at Adams City High School for as long as I can. I do this for our students because they deserve better. I just felt that that needed to be said because I'm not just a single data point. I believe I am reflective of the staff of what could have been. With that being said, and you can ask anybody at the staff at the high school, I'm an eternal optimist. Dr. Abrego has been open to meeting with me and with members of the staff when concerns have arisen, so I believe the opportunity to right the ship is still there. I look forward to working with the board and with Dr. Abrego in the future to ensure that history does not repeat itself, that the state of my colleagues is not shared by the next wave of enthusiastic teachers, that someday soon, our school and our students will have the consistency that they deserve. Thank you.
That brings it in to audience comments. Moving on to superintendent's report, Dr. Abrego. Or if you'd like to leave at this time, you may do so.
Abrego.
Superintendent Report, we do have three presentations. Our first presentation is from Kemp Elementary School, and I apologize, I believe we may have omitted somebody on the recognition, so when Kemp comes up here, if they could rectify that for us. Do we have representatives from Kemp?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Superintendent Abrego, I'm proud to announce Kemp Elementary and Principal Robert Savage as Financial Frameworks Horace Mann Agency Education Partner of the Year for the 2016-17 school year. Kemp's teachers and staff, with the support of Bob, participated in multiple recognition days and community events in the schools, or in the school. His efforts have resulted in a noticeable improvement in morale and teamwork. He's a big-picture thinker and thinks about how his decisions affect the students, parents, and community. He was always willing to advocate for his staff. I was actually there earlier, was it last week? For a teacher appreciation event, and one of his staff members said that he's cognizant about how it is to be a teacher and he still has that perspective, and that that really makes a difference. I always like to include a leadership quote when recognizing great leaders, and tonight I'd like to share with you one from Mother Teresa. "You can do what I cannot do, I can do what you cannot do. Together, we can do great things." And I was thinking, maybe this is a little bit appropriate after going through the last audience comments, but maybe this is good timing that I'm coming here instead of before. But it's an honor for us to award Kemp Elementary School and Principal Bob Savage for being an outstanding education partner.
No, I thank you for everything you do for our kids. We really appreciate it. One thing Horace Mann did do, we had an attendance competition during the state assessment time, and they provided two students with brand-new bicycles. There's pictures of it on our Facebook page if you want to look, but they're just all smiles. It was really a great day. Thank you.
Should we have a picture? It's Cameron. Want to come up and present? Cameron?
I guess.
Yeah, say where? Oh, here it comes.
Should we go down and shake their hands? Okay.
And as fate would have it, it's my turn to present for Kemp Elementary. President Rola, Dr. Abrego, distinguished members of the board, thank you for the opportunity for us to talk a little bit about how we've progressed in our UIP goals and to do a little bit of review on our mid-year data. Before I do that, I'd like to introduce Kristen West. She's our Assistant Principal this year. And here we go. So this task comes straight from our UIP. In order to provide a school, home communication, school home communication focused on ways for families to support student learning, we will offer family math and literacy training to our parents. We did that through two nights this year that were new to Kemp that hadn't been done before. One was a literacy night that we did in January. We had more than 350 people come to this night, which was, we were very happy with the turnout. When they came, parents had two different sessions. One session was in the classroom where they had individualized presentations based on what the students need at that grade level from the teachers and on ways that they could help their students improve in their reading. And then another session was facilitated by the manager of Community Engagement, Jesse Martinez. He gave stats about kids that learn how to read and the importance of that. He provided information about read plans, and he also gave them ways that they could help their kids improve in their reading. At the end of the night, every kid walked away with a book, and a lot of the feedback I got from the parents was really positive, how they were really excited to do some of these new strategies with their kids and to see how it works out. Another way that we accomplish this task is through our math night. Again, it's the first time that Kemp has had a math night. We had this in February, and more than 200 people showed up. Again, parents had two different activities that they participated in. The first one was making a game that they could take home and play with their students at home. And all the games were centered around number sense, so that they could go home and practice their number sense with their parents. And then the other activity centered around teaching parents the different algorithms that they can use to help their kids. So when we were in school, oh, so many years ago, we kind of learned the traditional algorithms, carry the one, long division, things like that. A lot of the algorithms that the kids learn now are based around increasing their number sense and understanding of why it works, more than just how it works. And some of the parents, when they try to help their kids with these algorithms, they don't quite understand how to help them. So the teachers taught the parents how to do the algorithms so they could help their kids with the homework. In addition to those two nights, we had the Haunted House of Learning. This is a tradition at Kemp. It was our fifth year of doing it. We had more than 300 people come out and do STEAM-based activities around a theme of Halloween. So different classrooms had science, technology, engineering, arts, and music, or math, thank you, activities. And this was a picture of a fourth grader making some slime. In addition, we also had a Dude and Donuts morning where students came in with their fathers, grandfathers, uncles. And while they were here, they had a donut, they wrote a poem, read a poem, and then kids were able to read their poem over a microphone in front of the entire audience. And again, every kid that came had a free book. In addition to this, next week, we have a Muffins with Mom, which is basically going to be the same thing but with moms. Without that Muffins with Mom, so far this year, we've had more than 1,000 people attend learning-centered and family engagement events at Kemp, which we think is... All the research shows that the more that parents are engaged and involved in the school, the better the kids do. And we take that to heart, so we're really proud of that. Another task from our UIP is, in order to implement a proactive system of instruction and intervention for behavior, we will implement a school-wide system for behavior management and dedicated time for SCL instruction, social-emotional learning instruction. We do that through a few different ways. One is our PBIS system. Kids can earn paws where they could buy things in the class store. And they can also buy a principal activity. The principal activity happens once a month on usually a Friday afternoon. We've had lots of things from arts and crafts to science demonstrations to what we did last week, which was water games with the kids, which was highly popular. We also have a Student of the Month lunch every month, where 69 students get to have pizza with me and Ms. West. They are chosen by demonstrating our trait of the month. We have five traits, a pride acronym that has five traits that we work on at Kemp: Positive Attitude, Respect, Integrity, Determination, and Excellence. And every month, we work, we focus on one of those traits, and then the teachers nominate kids that demonstrate that trait all month to have pizza with us. In addition, we have quarterly award assemblies where kids win awards based on those five traits, and we will give out about 1,000 awards this year. And then I already talked about the principal activity. Also this year, we decided to implement a consistent school-wide system of discipline that follows students throughout their day. So a lot of elementary teachers use the color chart, green, yellow, orange, red, to manage behavior. But what we did was make that portable. We put it on a meter stick, and we put clothespins with the kids' names on the meter stick. So now that when the class goes to art, when they go to PE, when they go to the cafeteria, when they're on recess, the stick follows with them, and they are held to the same level expectations for behavior wherever they go, and also the same systems of rewards and possibly consequences for that behavior wherever they go. Finally, we also implemented morning meetings this year. For the first 20 minutes of every day, every classroom teacher has a morning meeting with their students. The goal is to build community, and it gives a chance to do direct social-emotional learning instruction. Cameron Weiss did a great video on one of our teachers, Parker Gross, and his classroom has implemented these meetings. It's on the Facebook page if you're interested in looking for both Kemp and Adams 14. So before I go, I wanted to finish by looking at our data. This is from the mid-year STAR data. At math, we were first of the elementarys in improvement in math and third overall in our proficiency level. In reading, we were third in growth, fifth in proficiency, and in early literacy, first in growth, second in proficiency. Obviously, we like these firsts in the district rankings and growth in those two areas. We'd like to see the proficiency levels go up, but if we can keep our improvement going like that, then hopefully, with time, the proficiency levels also will go up. I'm pretty sure that takes about my five minutes. I could keep going on for a long time about what's going on at Kemp. There's a lot more things than just what I fit on this slide, but we've really been doing a lot here to engage students, engage parents, make school fun, and also allowing kids to learn as much as possible. So, thank you. Are there any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Our next presentation will be by Central Elementary.
Good evening, President Rola, distinguished board members, Dr. Abrego, and the Adams 14 community. I'm Dina Valades, and as a relatively longtime employee of Adams 14 in my 12th year here in the district, I'm really honored to be the new principal at Central. I came in halfway through the year, so I brought Sheila up here with me because she was the first half of the year. I'm not really sure how to run this thing. Okay. So, Central's mission, which was created before my time, still encapsulates our goal to provide a school community that fosters academic and social-emotional success for a lifetime. We currently, as of Monday afternoon, have 591 students. They keep coming in every day. We're excited to welcome them in. Thirty-seven certified staff members, 21 classified staff, one and a half school-based therapists currently, and two administrators. We serve preschool through fifth grade. We currently have, in our bilinguacy program, one kindergarten and two first-grade classes. Next year, we're excited to have two kindergarten classes, two first-grade and two second-grade classes in the bilinguacy program. We also house the SSN program and the Moderate Needs Program in our school. Our school-based leadership team, before I came, decided through the UIP process that our major improvement strategy is, based on the data, where leadership, culture, and climate, and educator effectiveness. To meet those needs, our school has, we're going to be a beyond-textbook school, and those trainings and support will help ensure fidelity among staff members as well as supporting our leadership team in knowing how to best keep our teachers and students on track. This summer, I will also be attending the Relay Program Fellowship, which will support the growth of a culture and climate that supports student growth, the analysis of data to support growth, and will support my knowledge of how to best evaluate and coach teachers so that they can make the biggest differences to support student growth. Additionally, we are working to foster a distributive leadership model in order to create the biggest investment of teachers and other staff members in our work through the leadership team. Vertical teams for, we'll also be having vertical teams for ELD, Writing and Math, as well as committees that include parent and community engagement, PBIS, our Equity Team, and MTSS. To meet the need for educator effectiveness, we will be having beyond textbooks, as I said. Our teachers K through 3 have been attending the Reading Foundations Academy, which has been supporting their knowledge of foundational reading skills. We are also working on incorporating reteach and enrichment opportunities within the schedule each day. And we are looking to, we've created lists of experts within the school to build capacity so that teachers can go to other teachers to learn the skills that they are lacking. To meet the need of the culture and climate focus, we will be having 30 minutes of daily sacred community bullying time to build relationships, teach skills related to character, education, and leadership, and opportunities to learn skills to avoid or deter bullying. As well as, every fourth day, students will receive an additional 45-minute opportunity to expand upon those character, leadership, and bully-proofing skills with projects and learning geared toward expanding those skills beyond the school. We are also trying to encourage more parent involvement through our back and breakfast with the principal. We also have a parent dismissal committee, because our dismissal procedures are currently a little clogged up. There are a lot of parents, and not very, not very much space for them to be in. So we're working on that as a committee, and I've had lots and lots of parents coming and being a part of that. We also at Central have biweekly pep assemblies. We've had the Grandparents' Day Breakfast. We had an October Count BBQ to encourage our students to come to school, family nights, harvest festivals, winter concerts, dances through the PTO, Skate City events, talent show, junior achievement, and our field day. Do you have any questions for me? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We do have one more, governing board president. And at this time, we'd like to present, or present you with our proposal to the State Board on Thursday. We'd like to do a practice with you and maybe get some feedback. But if you would give us this opportunity, Timmy and I will go in front.
So you're gonna be the State Board of Education, okay? Okay?
Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, distinguished members of the board, and Commissioner Anthes. My name is Timmy Archuleta, Secretary of Adams Board 14 Education, and these are my colleagues, President David Rola, Superintendent Dr. Abrego, Chief Academic Officer Arcilio Burgos, and Director of Technology and Assessment, Teresa Hernandez. We're excited to present today, we are excited to present to you today about our school district and our plan to inspire, empower, and educate the students of Adams 14 School District. Since we cannot hold this presentation in Commerce City, we would like to start by bringing a little of Commerce City to the State Board of Education. This short video should lay the foundation of the school district and help us to tell the Adams 14 story.
Located just north of downtown Denver lies the community of Commerce City, noted for its rich mix of cultures, history, and traditions. 33,000 residents live in the area served by the Adams 14 School District, which educates students in two preschools, seven elementary schools, two middle schools, and two high schools. Of the 7,500 students who attend our schools, more than half come from households where English is not the primary language. And in fact, our families collectively speak 24 different languages. Serving English learners is a strong focus of the school district, which has rolled out a bilinguacy program beginning in the elementary schools and moving up to the secondary schools. Bilingual families and multicultural students are strong assets to the community, and the ability to speak more than one language is a marketable skill for today's graduates. The community and district stand together to provide supports our children need in order to learn and thrive. About 85% of Adams 14 students qualify for free or reduced-priced lunch. All Adams 14 schools provide free breakfast and free lunch for every student, every day. Additionally, our school district has a 20% mobility rate and serves almost 560 students who are homeless. Our families want value, options, and control when it comes to their child's education. That's why our schools offer a full complement of music and arts programs, before-and-after-school enrichment options, advanced academic courses that can help a student earn college credit while in high school, career and technical courses which can lead straight into a career after graduation, and many hands-on discovery courses where students learn the Colorado academic standards through personal experience, experiments, and excitement. Parents have an increasingly important role in Adams 14, which is linking families in a more intentional and dynamic fashion. A growing number of families participate every other month in a new and very popular Parents Superintendent Forum. These highly interactive sessions put the power of knowledge and decision-making into parents' hands. About 900 caring adults are focused on meeting the needs of our students every day. Many of those who greet our children every day are themselves graduates of Adams 14. They've chosen to return to their community and support the students that follow them. Adams 14, where we inspire, educate, and empower.
Thank you. So what makes Adams 14 unique? As you see, the community of Commerce City is proud and vibrant. We would like to take another minute to lay the foundation. Using the Colorado Department of Education's School View Like District tool, we can compare Adams 14 School District to other school districts around the state. The first line shows the other school districts in Colorado that are similar to Adams 14 with a similar free and reduced lunch. The second line shows the other school districts in Colorado that are similar to Adams 14 with our minority percentage. At the bottom of the slide shows the other school districts in Colorado that are similar to Adams 14 and our percentage of English-language learners. The last fact is something that we are proud of in Adams 14. We embrace the richness that two languages bring to the livelihood of our students. As you can see, Adams 14 School District is unique in Colorado, and this is our strength. By understanding our uniqueness, we'll help you to understand the choices we have made for the future of Adams School District 14. Now that you have the context of Adams 14 School District, we would like to present to you our plan. This past spring, the Adams 14 School Board took advantage of a shift in leadership to bring its superintendent. to bring its superintendent, who has a successful track record in turning the school... in turning around struggling school districts. The school board wanted a dynamic leader who has had experience with other school districts who are similar to Adams 14, with a particular focus on how to support a comprehensive high school. After conducting a national search, Dr. Javier Abrego was selected. Dr. Abrego came out of retirement from Arizona, where as a superintendent, he distinguished himself as a turnaround specialist of districts and schools. He spearheaded the turnaround of two districts that transformed from some of the lowest-performing to top-performing districts. Dr. Abrego has over 40 years of experience working in education as a teacher, coach, and school, district, and state educational leader. Let me introduce to you Dr. Javier Abrego.
Madam Chair, thank you for allowing us this opportunity to share our plan with you today. Our first task was to build a leadership team that was ready to take on the hard work needed to turn around Adams 14. We selected a powerful team that includes expertise in data, technology, second language learning and biliteracy, grants, teacher effectiveness, professional development, and student services. To lead this work, we selected the Chief Academic Officer to head the turnaround efforts. Ms. Sely Burgos has over 30 years of experience working as a bilingual teacher, an English-as-a-second-language specialist, a data coach, and a district administrator focusing on academic and instruction. Ms. Burgos headed up the first and second phase addressing concerns of Adams 14, which included the root causes, analysis, and development of a plan to address these concerns. Let me introduce you to Ms. Burgos. We would introduce Ms. Burgos. So, how is Adams 14 School District performing? As you can see, Adams 14 has been underperforming over the past seven years in years of academic achievement, academic growth, and post- and secondary workforce readiness. Our task as a leadership team this year was to do an analysis of why and then put some strong evidence practices into place to reverse these trends. So what is the root causes and the lack of achievement? Essentially, the root causes analysis determined that the district lacks consistent systems and structures that are achievement-driven. In other words, the foundations and frameworks for teaching and learning were poorly designed and built. As a result, Adams 14 has a high turnover rate of central administration, school leaders, and instructional staff. The current instructional resources were not aligned to the Colorado academic standards, and decisions across the district were not made based on relevant data. The school calendar was not aligned with uninterrupted learning opportunities. And there was inconsistency, inconsistent best-first instruction throughout the lens of a culturally and linguistically diverse student population. What does Adams 14 need to do? Adams 14 must rebuild the foundation and put into place a solid framework for leadership, curriculum, assessment, instruction, and intervention. These are specific actions that the district must take. There must be immediate improvement of student growth and achievement across all of our schools. This can be done with customized and targeted levels of support based on needs. Additionally, the district must recruit, develop, retain, and sustain a highly qualified school leaders and teachers. The Adams School District must engage all stakeholders, including families, communities, and partners. Through these efforts, we can build a strong community intensely focused on student learning. What has Adams 14 done to address these causes? This year, the following have been put into place. The district purchased a research-based reading and language development program for kindergarten through 5th grade. We also implemented a research-based biliteracy program in grades kindergarten through 2nd grade and a special language program... a special language arts program for students in 6th through 8th grade. We created an opportunity for our students to earn the seal of biliteracy upon graduation. And we have provided cultural accomplishment training to all of our employees. We also developed a robust recruitment and hiring process and created a strong induction program. We instituted a parent forum and institutes to get stronger feedback and develop parent leadership skills. We began the planning process to use data to drive our decisions. What is Adams 14 doing to move forward? After an intensive reflection and research, Adams 14 District and Adams City High School reviewed the different accountability pathways. And with the support of Colorado Department of Education, we have decided that the most effective pathway that will support the district's goals and address our root causes will be an external management partner. In looking for an external management partner, the number-one criteria would be a partner that can provide frameworks for teaching and learning that could be implemented immediately and effectively. Given the experience that I had with Beyond Textbooks, their tremendous track record, and the need of Adams 14 School District, Beyond Textbooks will be an effective fit for our district. So who is Beyond Textbooks? Beyond Textbooks got its start in Vail, Arizona, near Tucson. The district found itself failing, just like Adams 14. After a deep study, they realized that there was a lack of consistency in direction across the district. Stakeholders are going in all different directions. They set out to move everyone going in the same direction. The district leadership followed the research, which states, "When schools have clear, standard-based curriculum, solid first instruction, ongoing assessments to progress monitor success, and schedule intervention and enrichment, schools will succeed." Vail School District established and implemented a solid framework curriculum, instruction and assessment, intervention, and climate culture. And they did this by holding schools accountable to the frameworks that they were able to transform from one of the lowest-performing districts in Arizona to the highest district in the state. By doing this, this garnered a lot of attention from other school districts, and they found themselves having multiple partners helping them in their turnaround process. The district leadership decided to create a nonprofit with their own governing board and staff. By following a strict process that includes professional development and consultation, districts who have partnered with Beyond Textbooks have seen tremendous growth and tremendous success in a very short period of time. Currently, Beyond Textbooks partners with 116 school districts in Arizona and a handful of districts in Idaho, Kentucky, California, Illinois, Wyoming, and now, we will be the first in Colorado. Beyond Textbooks is very selective. The districts that they work with, Adams 14 underwent a rigorous process and was accepted as a partner by Vail School District for the 2016-2017 school year. Will Beyond Textbook work? You will want to pay particular attention to the set of data as it speaks to the power of Beyond Textbooks. In working with the Arizona Department of Education, Adams 14 School District did a review of all Beyond Textbooks partner schools and compared them with non-partner schools. As you can see, the partner schools outperformed non-partner schools in the area of mathematics and consistently outperformed other districts in the English-language arts over a three-year period. The robust growth in math is of particular interest to Adams 14 as this is an area of need for us. How will Beyond Textbooks serve as an external partner? Beyond Textbooks will fulfill the role of an external management partner by assuming contractual authority and accountability associated with the following components of school turnaround. Beyond Textbooks will provide school district, school and district accountability through a dedicated Beyond Textbook license who will report to the superintendent. This individual will be responsible for the evaluation and implementation of the program. Beyond Textbooks will have the power to give orders, make decisions, and enforce implementation by providing direction to the superintendent. Beyond Textbooks will provide extensive professional development, customized curriculum calendars, common assessments, and structured intervention and enrichment. In addition, Beyond Textbooks will include existing curriculum materials used at Adams 14, as well as provide over 40,000 lessons that have been vetted by teachers and other experts. For the 2017-18 school year, Beyond Textbooks will be rolled out to the schools that are most in need in Adams 14 District. These schools will include Rose Hill, Central Elementary, as well as Adams City High School. All of the schools have access to additional supports through Connect for Success, the Turnaround Network, Turnaround Leadership, and Diagnostic Review Grants. What about the other schools in the district? Well, over the next year, Beyond Textbooks will provide the immediate and necessary frameworks and structures for our schools with the greatest need. However, systems and structures through specific frameworks for curriculum, instruction, assessment, intervention will be addressed at all of our schools. Adams 14 will continue to partner with the Buena Center at Colorado University to oversee the Literacy Squared frameworks for the specific students and families that choose the biliteracy option for their students in preschool through 12th grade. Finally, all schools will follow data cycles to determine students who need additional instruction or enrichment through the multi-tiered system of support. Specific professional development and curriculum mapping for reading foundations and math instruction will also be implemented. What is the plan for Adams City High School? Adams City High School will also be supported by the Beyond Textbook rollout. In addition, the school leaders... the school leadership has been restructured. The new principal and assistant principal duties have been adjusted to provide more efficient management of the school. Additional supports have been put in place to enhance coaching, clear professional development, flexible scheduling, expanding graduating pathways with greater emphasis on career and technical education, and a stronger oversight of English-language learners and exceptional students. What will Adams 14 achieve? We have outlined the causes of lack of achievement in Adams 14 School District and have proposed specific strategies for turnaround. So what do we expect will happen? As a result of the implementation of these actions, Adams 14 School District, governing board, and superintendent have set specific actionable goals in consultation with our stakeholders. As far as district performance, by 2018, all schools will attain an improvement status. Another goal? By 2019, all schools in the district will attain a performance status. And this will lead to the district attaining accreditation with distinction by 2020. In the area of student achievement, there will be an increase of students meeting or exceeding expectations on the PAR test by 20% each school year. By the year 2020, we expect 75% of our students in Adams 14 will meet or exceed expectations on the PAR test. There will be a reduction of students on the read program... read plans, and by two... excuse me. There will be a reduction of students on read plans by 20% each year, with our ultimate goal of having no students on read plans by the year 2022. We also will decrease the number of first-year teachers each year and strive to hire no more than 50 teachers per year. Make no doubt that these are very high standards. It will be the responsibility of all stakeholders in Adams 14